...meeting in the City of Bellflower, Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, at seven o'clock. Let the record show that we reconvened from closed session, and there was no reportable action. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Schnableger? Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Make a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Schnableger.
Second. Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Can I have everybody stand, and we're going to have the invocation led by Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas, and a pledge of allegiance by our Director of Planning and Building and Safety, Elizabeth Corpus.
Let's borrow heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we recognize your presence and greatness. We thank you for the gift of life, the gift of family, and the gift of community, especially the City of Bellflower. We thank you for all the blessings you have given us. We thank you for giving us a wonderful city and its wonderful residents. We thank you for giving us one of our dedicated staff. We thank you for giving us our military and first responders. Please protect them as they protect us. As we gather tonight, please remember those who are sick, who are homeless, who are unemployed. Please give them the comfort and the need that they so deserve. As we gather today to take care of the business of City of Bellflower, we ask for your guidance. We ask for your gift to give us the wisdom, and please enlighten us to decide what's best for the city as a whole. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The State of the City, two thousand and eighteen video has been edited and is now posted to our YouTube channel. The video will be broadcasting on Channel thirty-six also, or the local channel, one hour prior to the council meeting broadcast. The days and times in which these is going is Wednesday at six p.m., Thursdays and Saturdays at ten a.m. Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The November sixth, two thousand and eighteen City of Bellflower municipal election has been canceled due to no more candidates that are office to be elected. The three qualified candidates nominated by the close of the nomination period on August tenth were Ron Schnableger in District One, Sunny Arzantinez in District Three, and Ray Dutton in District Five. The appointments of the nominated candidates have been confirmed, and the municipal's election canceled. Bellflower voters, however, will still have other local, county, and state contests to vote on at the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen general election, conducted by the Los Angeles County Register Recorder County Clerk Office. Please keep in mind also, we have a lot of ballot measures to be voted on on November sixth. For more information about this election, please contact the City of Bellflower Municipal Election. Please contact the City Clerk's Office at five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two two seven one, or by email at c clerk at bellflower dot org. That's all, hi, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Juan Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Bellflower and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department have teamed up with Kaiser Permanente to host a National Take Back Initiative event on Saturday, October twenty-seventh, from ten a.m. to two p.m. The event will take place at the Kaiser Permanente Bellflower Medical Office, located at nine four zero zero East Roscrenz Avenue, here in the City of Bellflower. Local residents can turn in unused or expired medication anonymously for proper disposal by the Drug Enforcement Administration. The event is free to the public. For more information, please visit www dot takebackday dot d e a dot gov, or www dot k p dot org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nominations for the Twenty-Fifth Annual Bravo Awards are now being accepted. The Bravo Awards, which stands for Bellflower, recognizes acts of valor and outstanding service, honor residents and employees in Bellflower, who have demonstrated an outstanding public service or an act of heroism related to public safety during the past year. Citizens, residents, sheriff and fire department personnel, medical and security professionals are all eligible to be nominated for this position. The nomination deadline is Friday, November ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Recipients of the two thousand and nineteen Bravo Awards will be honored at a special ceremony on Thursday, February seventh, two thousand and nineteen, right here at City Hall, at eleven a.m. at William and Jane Bristow Auditorium. Jim Abbott, a major league pitcher, will serve as our special keynote speaker, along with other local dignitaries. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Okay, we have a proclamation declaring October twenty-third through the thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week, and may I have everybody come on up to the outside platform there, and I'm gonna get a proclamation, go on and give it to Eileen Jones and company. So, Eileen, are you here? I don't see you.
Everyone else can come forward.
Oh, all the red shirts, how about all the red shirts come up over here? Yeah. Thank you for coming here tonight. Why are we coming? Because we're gonna get some pictures, so I have everybody kind of squeezing up in here. Look this way, because the photos are gonna come that way. Who would be, who will I be giving the, who wants to take the? Okay, every year, the schools have what's called a Red Ribbon Week, and it's regarding to make awareness to the children for drug awareness, and we enjoy this every year, and this proclamation is for the Red Ribbon Week, and it's Jocelyn Longo? Did I really miss that? Jocelyn? I apologize. Come out here in front of the camera. See? Now, we're both embarrassed, aren't we? But anyway, on behalf of the City of Bellflower and my colleagues, I want to prevent you guys from the wonderful things you can do with the children for this awareness during Red Ribbon Week, and here's a proclamation. Would you like to say anything? Okay, and thank you. And, oh, come on, we've got two more. You can only come up here if you smile. Let's see a smile. There we go. Let me get in the back here. I don't want to stand in front of anybody. There we go. We're always in pictures here. Okay. All right.
Public comments for item ten, so I'll read that first.
Yeah, public comments, sorry about that.
This is a time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on a non-agenda item? Now's your time to come forward. We missed you the last month.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I'm here on behalf of Clifton and Brackenseek Library, nine nine four five Flower Street. I'm very pleased to announce that this year, we are partnering with the County of Los Angeles Public Health Department to offer free flu shots on Saturday, November third, from one o'clock to four o'clock p.m. Flu vaccines are recommended for everyone six months of age and older, and so everyone in the community is invited. Again, that's Saturday, November third, one o'clock to four o'clock p.m., free flu shots. Thank you. I'll leave some flyers at City Hall.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Anybody else wishing to speak? Not seeing any. Mr. Stewart, item eleven A.
This is consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider adopting Resolution eighteen dash sixty-six, a resolution authorizing a city manager to execute and purchase, a purchase and sale agreement, file number eight nineteen, in a form approved by the city attorney with Gold Coast Properties, C A five LLC, for the disposition of real property located at eight eight two seven through eight eight two nine Artesia Boulevard and eight eight zero zero Palm Street. And I believe Mr. Delonge has a brief staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you tonight, for your consideration, again, is the sale of city-owned property at eighty-eight twenty-seven through twenty-nine Artesia Boulevard and eighty-eight hundred Palm Street to Gold Coast Properties for the development of two Choice brand hotels, a WoodSpring Suites Extended Stay Hotel and a Sleep Inn. The subject site is located at the northwest quadrant of Artesia Boulevard and Lakewood Boulevard, just west of Southern California Edison Rightaway. The property is approximately three point five acres in area. The redevelopment agency acquired the property in two thousand and five, and with the Great Recession in two thousand and eight, and the uncertainty surrounding the dissolution of redevelopment in two thousand and twelve, the site has remained vacant, and in June two thousand and eighteen, the city purchased the site from the successor agency in order to maintain control and flexibility regarding the future development of the site. Staff first made contact with WoodSpring Suites in May two thousand and sixteen at the annual International Conference of Shopping Centers trade show in Las Vegas. At that time, WoodSpring, a Midwest and East Coast brand, had not yet expanded into California. Since then, WoodSpring Suites started its move to open hotels in the Western U.S., and they were purchased by the Choice brand of hotels, which includes the Ascend, Cambria, Comfort Inn, Comfort Suites, Sleep Inn, Quality Inn, Clarion, Mainstay Suites, Suburban Extended Stay, Econolodge, and Roadway Inn Flags. Gold Coast owns and operates one WoodSpring Suites and has four others under construction in Florida, and these include locations in Naples and Miami. They currently have thirteen hotels in various stages of development in Florida, the Carolinas, and California. Gold Coast is proposing to develop the two hotels on the three point five acre site, a four-story, one hundred and twenty-two-room WoodSpring Suites Extended Stay Hotel, which you see up on the screen, and a three-story, sixty-seven-room Sleep Inn. The conceptual site plan on the screen shows how the two hotels could be oriented on the The developer will pay a fair market negotiated purchase price of two point five million dollars for the land, and once stabilized, the two hotels are estimated to generate four hundred and forty thousand dollars annually in transient occupancy tax. This would make this development one of the highest revenue generators for the city. Additionally, the project represents eighteen million dollars of private investment into the city, and will generate nineteen jobs. The development of the two hotels will require an amendment to the West Artesia specific plan to allow for hotels within the specific plan area. The sale will be contingent on City Council approval of the specific plan amendment and the conditional use permits for those hotels. In addition, the developer and the city will enter into a reimbursement agreement that will cover the costs for staff time, consultants, and legal fees involved in processing and/or reviewing the specific plan amendment. Pursuant to Assembly Bill eight oh six, which amended several sections of the government code, including the process for the sale of city-owned property for economic development purposes, staff has prepared a summary report that describes the important points of the agreement. It is attached as part of the agenda packet and was available for public review, along with the draft purchase and sale agreement prior to the public hearing. At this time, staff is recommending the City Council reopen the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution number eighteen dash sixty-six, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my report. Staff is available to answer any questions, and Mr. Aaron Packard from Gold Coast is also here tonight if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Delonge. Any questions of staff?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garza.
Thank you, Mrs. Delonge, for that presentation. Can you, I'm not sure if I missed it in the report, but can you share with us how long that current property has been in its current state?
Since two thousand and five. That's when the redevelopment agency purchased it.
Some of the questions that I had, like the investment amount of the eighteen million, the job creation, you already answered. If, and then the other examples of the Gold Coast Properties, which is good. Can you share with us what the timeline going forward would be if this project, I understand this is potentially, depending if it gets approved, this is a first step in a multi-step process, so?
Correct.
What would the timeline be?
Well, after, and if this is approved this evening, the process for doing, for processing a specific plan amendment will take about four to six months, and in that time, the applicant could possibly run concurrently with the CUP process, and then construction would start after that, after they do their construction drawings after that, so you probably wouldn't see construction on the site for probably about nine months.
Couple steps in between, though. Don't you have, so, designer view and there's standards they have to meet in order to get through this process?
That would be all part of the specific plan in the CUP process.
What would be some of those standards?
Some of those standard would be hours of operation, that no hourly rentals, stuff like that. The design of the properties would go through design review, which would be an ad hoc committee that would look at that and make sure that that meets all the design standards that would be put in the specific plan.
And then, how about operational, like maintenance standard, security?
Well, there is some, those are not necessarily standards, we're doing design standards, not necessarily, we can do off, hours of operation.
Conditions of approval, when they go through the planning process, we can incorporate all the security standards we need to on that, and design standards into it. What we have is a first step, and an exclusive negotiating agreement to get to all those things we want to see in that hotel.
Correct.
Including the flags, we want to see, the minimum flags we want to see, right?
Correct. Okay, perfect. Just, that completes my question, just a comment. I've actually, when I've gone to Kentucky, actually, I've stayed at WoodSpring Suites, so I'm familiar with the brand, I'm familiar with the quality of their developments, so just wanted to make that comment, but that completes my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, mister.
If you have the answer to these questions, of the eighteen million dollar investment that you mentioned, how much of that is for the improvements on the property?
It's my understanding that that's for the entire improvement separate from the acquisition of the land.
Okay, not operating capital?
No. That's for the construction of the property.
What I'm getting at is the property tax that it will bring to the city. Okay. How about, do you have any ideas in terms of the amenities that's gonna be offered in the hotels?
We can double-check with the applicant, they are here.
Okay, once we open the public hearing, that's gonna be one of my questions.
Okay.
Okay, that's all for now.
All my questions have been answered.
I just have one question, is, I know it's a conceptual drawing or whatever, but during the consults were drawing, is it all the parking onsite, or?
Yes, they will not need to use any off-site parking.
They won't have to worry about the Edison lines or get licenses.
Correct.
Okay. That was it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second. Without objection, that'll be the order. And why don't we hear from the applicant for Woodward? And, yeah, come on up. I'm sorry, I didn't write down the name that was dropped from the.
It's WoodSpring Suites is the hotel, well, one of the hotels, the other one is the sleep-in. I'm Aaron Packard, I'm with Gold Coast Premier Properties. So, as Jim stated, we're proposing a sleep-in hotel. Amenities for a sleep-in are an indoor pool, they have a continental, or actually, a hot breakfast every morning. It could or could not have a fitness center, probably won't have, since it does have the pool. The amenities for the WoodSpring Suites is a fitness center. We've got coffee in the lobby twenty-four hours a day. There's no pool to that hotel, and it also has, since it is an extended stay, it's got kitchenettes in every room, so that the guests can cook their own meals, and able to have the luxuries, if you will, of being in a home. Do you have any other, I mean, I wanted to answer that for you specifically, Councilmember. Are there any other questions that you might have? I could, I could go into what our base of our guests is for the WoodSpring. It's mainly made up of nurses, traveling nurses, your engineers that are coming into a factory to maybe retool it. Oftentimes, we see traveling salespeople use our hotel as a base of operations in an area, so that they can see all of their customers in a specific area. That makes up the main, and construction workers, too. We won't be able to house them while they're building our hotel, but certainly, as other projects are being built in the City of Bellflower, which we are very excited, will and could happen, that would be another guest that we would take care of. The WoodSpring is, of course, an extended stay, and it can be as much as two weeks, which is our normal, the minimum, you can actually stay nightly, but it's, the rate is based on a weekly stay.
Is extended stay the three-story one or the four-story?
It is the four-story.
Four-story one, okay, got it.
We're looking at roughly, probably starting out about four hundred and ninety-nine dollars a week.
And the extended stay doesn't, has a fitness room and no pool?
Correct.
And then, the other one, we call it, what's the?
It's a sleep-in, it's a Choice brand.
Choice brand, okay.
Yeah, it's been, it's been around for several years, and Choice is making a push to bring that.
And that has a pool and no weight room, no fitness room?
No fitness room, yes.
And?
But they also have.
Have the breakfast and all that, too, like, you know, the business model that we see.
Yes.
It was interesting, you meant, you know, traveling nurses and engineers and stuff that travel or whatever, and whatnot. Does new football stadium have any play of coming to town? I'm just curious.
We could certainly handle those guests as well.
It didn't have a bearing, you did on the marketing survey, I'm guessing.
It did a little bit, yes.
It helps, it helps. There's a percentage there, okay. Got it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Couple of questions. In the WoodSprings Suites, will there be some kind of a small market where your guests can buy some stuff to cook?
What we provide there for them to purchase would be like cooking utensils and cookware and dishes and plates. There will be no market there. We really like having the availability of a close by shopping center where those guests can go and buy whatever they might like. It's hard to stock a market for that large of a hotel, and be able to really, I mean, you're gonna have a lot of different tastes, a lot of different likes and dislikes.
No, when I say market, like, let's say, something like pasta, or just the basic stuff that they may have forgotten, or sugar, or salt, pepper, you know, things like that?
We will have vending machines that will have like ice cream, and snacks, and candy, and sodas, and that type of stuff, but no sugar, or that type of thing.
Okay, okay. Another question is, why is there a difference between sleep-in and WoodSprings?
Sleep-in is a transient nightly stay hotel, and the WoodSpring Suites is geared towards a longer stay and extended stay. For the traveler that wants a, wants a place to stay, that's not gonna be quite as costly.
So, there'll be different sets of management?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so they're totally different, under the same umbrella, but separate entities?
We are considering building the hotel, and then, and selling that to another franchisee, the sleep-in, but, yes, they're both currently will be under the same umbrella.
Under the Choice umbrella?
Yes, well, yes, they are both Choice Hotels.
Okay. So, now, the other question I have is, will there be direct access from the parking into the rooms in both sleep-in and WoodSprings?
They are both internal corridor hotels.
So, they have to go to the lobby?
They have to go through the lobby, or through.
So, it's gonna be a typical hotel?
Absolutely.
So, it's not like a typical motel where in, you park, and then, you have your own door into your unit?
No, sir.
That's not the case?
That is not the case.
So, this is a real hotel?
This is a real hotel.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, I just want to clarify that, okay? Because to me, that's the big distinction between a motel and a hotel.
A motor hotel and a hotel.
Exactly.
Yes.
All right, that's all for now. Thank you.
Mr. Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. So, I'm assuming you already marketed this to Choice, and so they've already approved for these two brands to be at this location?
We already have the franchise agreement for the WoodSpring.
Okay.
And we are currently in negotiations with Choice for the sleep-in.
Okay, great. So, is it an opportunity that if the market changes between now and whenever you actually build a hotel, that it could be a different brand, or is it kind of locked in?
The WoodSpring will remain the WoodSpring. There is a consideration that we may go with a Comfort Suites, or actually, not a Comfort Suites, a Comfort Inn on the other hotel rather than a sleep-in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Which is a Choice brand.
Which is also a Choice brand, yes.
Mr. Coops?
So, even though you have two separate buildings, there would be a commonly shared parking lot?
They are separate parking lots with cross-access.
All right, but you wouldn't have a wall separating them or anything?
No, sir.
It'd be all free-flow?
Do they share facilities? They will not share facilities. The guest has to be registered in the hotel to use the facilities. The way that the property is set up is such that we were going to have to allow some cross-access, not only for guests, but also for first responders, for fire, or, you know, E M C, E M T.
Do you have any concern for the proximity to the freeway and the noise levels?
No, that's not, not a concern for us, that's where.
That's a concern for the guest.
That's a concern for the guest, yes. No, we take, we take into consideration that we build by freeways.
Okay.
So, the nice thing is that there's a real nice wall right there, right on the freeways, which, you know, buffers a majority of that sound. We also look at our window composition in that it helps to minimize that, and then the orientation of the hotel also helps to alleviate some of that traffic noise.
I heard that this would provide additional nineteen jobs in our city. That seems like a low amount for the biggest facility that you have there.
Well, our, the operating model for the WoodSpring Suites is such that we can operate with seven full-time employees. that we can operate with seven full-time employees for that. We offer cleaning for the rooms every other week rather than every day, so the guest is expected to, you know, maintain their room as well, and that's part of the rental agreement.
You mean every other day, instead of every other week?
Every other week.
They clean every other week?
We actually have the cleaning people come in every other week.
Oh, I see.
And that's when they also change out linens.
So if you're staying there two weeks and you're not gonna see the cleaning people, you're moving on before, you're there three weeks, then you'll, you know, depends on the cycle.
Yes, but we do offer, we do offer the option of if they would like to have that done, they can...
You can pay extra for it.
Pay extra.
But you indicated there was a washer and dryer in each unit, so they can do their own linens?
We have a laundry facility for the guests within...
So it's a common area where you can, because I know some of these facilities have their own washer and dryer in them, that's not the case here.
That is not the case here, no.
But you got an ironing board.
If you would like an ironing board, you can check out an ironing board.
Oh, you can check 'em out?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize that, what else do you need to check out?
That's about it.
That's about it.
It's the business model for, it's what your business model for what the price is.
Exactly, and that helps keep the, that helps keep the cost down.
Now, does the operator or the manager have an onsite domicile at each facility?
No.
All right, so they work as an employee, they go home and they do their business, and they come back, work eight hours, and another person comes on and takes on the managerial responsibilities, is that right?
That is correct, that is correct. The registration desk is not open in the WoodSpring Suites twenty-four hours a day. There are times when it's closed, but we have what is called a safety attendant that comes on and they have a room that they stay in. And they're available if a guest would come in after hours, if there's any need for whatever another guest may need, you know, that's checked in already.
So does each property have a person of responsibility that's there while the guests are being housed?
Yes.
All right, so if there's an issue, a fire, altercation, there are responsible people there twenty-four hours even though they don't live on the premise?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you hire people that live in this area? Or do you bring them in from a training area and say, you're going to now house your, you're gonna operate Bellflower's model, or how does that go?
We hire them locally.
Okay.
And then train them here.
Do your way of doing business.
Since this will be potentially our first one, we'll probably have to train them in Florida, where we've already got open hotels, but as we get more hotels in the area, they'll be trained here as well.
Bellflower, Florida, maybe.
Yeah, I would see, I would not know why we wouldn't be able to do that.
They're always trying to help our community people.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we are a community, we're a family business, so we have a strong sense of community.
Do you find your hotels are able to support some of our community efforts in our Little Leagues, our street fests, our, how, what is your involvement in the cities in which you operate?
We, all the above.
All right, of course, what are you gonna say, no, we don't do any of that stuff?
You know, there's, and it just depends on the community.
No, I get it.
And what the need is there, we have, you know...
But would it be safe to say you want to be a community member that's well thought of?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's not just for people from another area using this as a place to house and leave? You want to be an active part of our community, that's what we're hoping for.
Yes, yes, that sense of community spirit and family.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have. Okay, good, I got one more. Is this the first WoodSpring coming to California?
There, prior to it being, it was rebranded to WoodSpring from Value Place, so there's a Value Place in Sacramento that was rebranded to a WoodSpring, but there are others in the area that are being built by other franchisees. There's a one in Redlands, and then one in Norco.
So the market just kind of hit for this organization, yeah?
Some other areas on the West Coast, there's three in the Seattle area. There's one currently being built in Portland. And then I know there's another one being considered in the Sacramento area. And then I believe there's also a one in Colton, California, that's under consideration, so...
Great, thank you for answering some of the questions, this wasn't in the staff report, whatnot. Let's see if, let's have you step aside and we'll have the, in the public, in the audience, and anything that the public says that you want to rebuttal or anything, you can come back up, okay?
I'm curious, I don't remember, how much did we, the city paid with development for this, to buy this land, is it four hundred thousand or something? Because I'm thinking from the two point five million, how much did we make a profit on it?
How much did the city buy it from the successor agency? The city bought it for six hundred thousand.
So six hundred, so we made one point nine million?
Really, yeah?
Huh? Oh, I mean, yeah, after the sale.
After it sold.
Yeah, most of it, so they're gonna have a security, okay. There's something on my mind, but I just can't get it, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Anybody else wishing to speak on this?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here in city council meeting, city council members. My name is Priscilla Brown, you're all familiar with me. Just a couple of things that I wanted to address about this. Currently, we have, I'm kind of wondering why we're looking at hotels for this property, because currently, we have, just off the top of my head that I can think of is sixteen motels, I know they're not hotels, motels in the city. And it's a city of six point one square miles, so now we're gonna add two hotels, and my understanding is it's gonna be a total of a hundred and eighty-nine rooms combined. So most of the motels, because I know I live down the street from one, and I know a lot of the motels we currently have are problems in the city. The one at my corner on Lakewood and Oak, the sheriffs are constantly there. I can constantly watch them drive down my street, and that's where they end up. And I may be wrong in stating this, and I'm sure Joel Hockman could say whether or not they do this, but I think the sheriffs stop there on a regular basis and check to see who's registered there, who is staying there. But I know we've had problems with, and I don't, I live closer to Clark, so I'm, this is, but I do have friends who live right directly behind the hotel, and, you know, there's things like, you know, there's drugs there, there's prostitution there, there's been stabbings there, there's been, I believe there was a shooting there, there's been vehicles, stolen vehicles. So, and I know the same is with the one on Clark and the ninety-one, and a lot of the other little areas. So our motels tend to bring in problems, and I know that a lot of the people that stay there are staying there on vouchers, and a lot of them are recently released, people who have been recently released from prison. Well, I guess government assistance would be the vouchers. So that's kind of my concern, I know this is a hotel, and I know that's different than a motel, and the only difference is it's enclosed, that's the only difference between a hotel and a motel. So it is a hotel, but I'm just wondering, why do we need another a hundred and eighty-nine rooms in Bellflower? We're not a, we're not a city who has events that bring people here to stay. I don't think we have, I'm sorry? Okay, well, the event center, I think, is like, I don't think they have like events, long-term events that you would stay a week for, and maybe that's not my understanding, but I don't think that's happening. So we don't have, we're not a destination city, and we already, I, do we even know the capacity of the motels we have now? I mean, does anybody know that? I don't know if anybody knows that, I don't know that, I didn't do any research on that. I'm just kind of wondering why we need two hotels? I mean, do we actually bring in that many people in our city to build two hotels like this? And I wasn't clear on, I guess they're a franchise, they don't own the ones, there is actually one in Sacramento currently operating, and there's one in Bakersfield currently operating, but I understand maybe that they're not the franchisee that owns those. But anyway, so I was just doing, you know, kind of looking at the reviews on this, and the nightly rate, except, well, for those, now, I don't know if this is gonna be the same for this one, but the nightly rate on, like, the WoodSprings Inn is comparable to the Motel Six on Downey and the ninety-one freeway, which, if you know anything about that location, and I'm sure you do, it's the trashiest place in the world. And all you gotta do is go to the shopping center right there, and you see them coming, and the quality people is, there's, again, prostitution there, there's drugs there, and if I'm not mistaken, it's even been checked for human trafficking. And I, the sheriffs have had to contact the owners on several occasions to, with problems there. So this, the nightly rate is comparison, at least the one in, I believe that was the one in Bakersfield, is comparable to that. Now, I don't know if this franchise is gonna have a higher rate, but, you know, so we're comparable to the Motel Six around the corner. We already have five motels between, I think, Lakewood and Coke, so that's already a big place for motels. So I don't know, and some of the things that were, well, he did mention that they don't have somebody at the desk twenty-four hours a day, so you check in in the middle of the night, you gotta call somebody to come and register you. You don't have, well, some of the ones in Bakersfield and Sacramento did have security guards on site, I guess, out in the parking lot. They do have small kitchenettes, but those weren't stocked with any kinds of pots and pans or anything. You had to like buy those things, which kind of makes it sound like it's a place where people who are going to stay long-term and live there are going to be the ones that want to buy pots and pans and, because if you're only gonna stay there for two weeks, you're not gonna want to buy pots and pans for two weeks. There was also something in one of those about you stayed, after twenty-eight days, you were asked to leave and then you had to come in and re-register for another twenty-eight days? And that was something to do with some... You see, you're required to check out and in after twenty-eight days, and this was to subvert California law that gives you tenants' rights and hotel taxes exemption for thirty days of stay. So I don't know anything about that, I didn't have time to research that, but I thought that was a little odd. So is this gonna be more of a place to house people? Are we gonna have like people living there off of vouchers, and is that what it's gonna be? No?
Totally different animal, but I'll let the developer, there are a couple ways, a lot of your questions, they're good questions, and I'll let the developer answer those questions when the public has had their comments, and there's a lot of things we can do to remediate that going in, including the security issues. It would be part of the conditions of approval. What you have before you tonight is a purchase and sale agreement. We still have to get through a specific plan process and several conditions of approval on this hotel site before they can even develop and occupy it. And you can guarantee there will be security concerns that are gonna be addressed on that site, and they have corporate standards on how they rent rooms, and they're different kind of clients. The motels are, there's no corporate standard there, they're not leasing to firms and corporations, and quite frankly, those are catchers, catch cannons, how they get their tenants. This would be an entirely different model, and rather than explain their model for you, I'd like them to explain it first, but I think it's a different business plan totally than the local motels that we're seeing now.
Okay.
Priscilla, I'd like to chime in too.
Yeah.
Your concerns are on my radar personally, and I would believe it's the rest of my colleagues too. We did get a letter from another resident or whatever explaining...
And you may have received a few of those, did you receive a few emails?
I only saw one, I only saw one.
Oh, okay, okay.
But anyway, all your concerns, and I have questions too to follow us. This is more of a business hotel, and it's a hotel, it's a different animal on the outside. I just personally have to vet it out a little bit to see what it actually is. As far as, you know, one of your comments was, do we really need these many rooms? Obviously, if someone's gonna do this, you know, multimillion-dollar investment, they must see a need for being able to rent the rooms.
Well, it's not the first door kick we've had. We've had several hotels starting to kick doors along the ninety-one freeway site because of an increased demand. And again, I would let them explain why that demand is coming now, as opposed to why it didn't happen before, or why it may not happen later, but there is a local demand now for room space, and we're not the only city where that's occurring. It's happening along the corridors of the freeways, so...
I just can't see that many people come to Bellflower for, I mean, we don't have a convention center, we don't have any...
It's not for Bellflower's specific things, it's for regional areas. They work on a radius, and I don't know how many mile radius they work from, but there's a fair amount of jobs being created now in the twenty-mile radius around Bellflower, so, and I think that's where they rent their rooms from.
Okay, and I know he mentioned, you know, they have kitchenettes so that people can cook, and they don't have, you know, some, one of you asked, I don't remember who it was, if they had a market on the premises where you could buy things, and, you know, it's like, no, you go to a local market, we don't have a local market in that area.
We've learned from experience, and I can assure you there'll be a security component to the hotels that they go in, that'll be a fact of life.
But I mean, I'm saying, we don't have, we don't have a grocery store for them to shop at in the area.
Working on it. We're working on it, I promise.
You got us there.
I hope so, because, I mean, I don't know where there's one closest they're gonna go to to purchase it, because we don't have one, so...
Mr. Mayor?
I would much rather see some kind of retail, somewhere where we can shop and spend our money in our own cities.
And quite frankly, that's the way this site has been available since two thousand and five. Originally, it was marketed as a retail site. It doesn't have a lot of attraction for a retail site because of the non-contiguous parking, because the Edison wires running back and forth there. It's just that, now ironically, it looks like there's something moving on the corner, we will redevelop the retail on that strip south of the freeway, moving south on Lakewood Boulevard.
Where the old Stater Brothers' house?
No, on the other side of the street.
Oh, okay.
An entirely separate product, but that's, and again, we couldn't make the twains meet because of the wires between, and you can't use the right-of-way for permanent parking, so... It's a very difficult site to develop. We think, you know, after looking at a lot of different concepts on this, this is a very high use for that site, and I think, provided they can meet the standards that we'd need for a hotel development there, that this is a good use for that site. And given, I mean, it's a far-cried difference seen from the motels that were developed there, and they were developed at a time before there were conditions of approval and security requirements, and all the way down the line. I'm not saying we won't make mistakes, but we will make those mistakes, they'll be, you know, wherever you go. We've kind of lived and learned from those, so...
I mean, that's just kind of a problem area already. It's a problem area, that area is a problem area, so...
Those are legitimate questions, and frankly, we've been asking those questions too, and I think the developer will have a lot of answers for you.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if I could just make some comments.
Mr. Garza?
Well, you said, like the mayor said, and everyone here has said, your concerns are valid, and I think because that's why we vetted this, it hasn't been something that came up recently. We've been vetting it for a while. One thing I would like to clarify though is that, you're right, at this point in time, that area is in a current state that, right? My viewpoint is, if we have somebody that's interested in investing that type of money in that area, typically, from my experience, what that leads to is a catalytic change. You have a catalyst project like this that ends up changing that whole area. And you're right, in terms of maybe some portions of Bellflower being, we question, like, why are they interested in coming here? Our city is changing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is, yeah.
And I'll give you an example, so one of the examples I have is the exchange project that we have coming up, right, at the old J.C. Penney property, right? So one of the elements in that project is a shared office use project, which most people don't know what WeWork is, right? It's almost like Uber where people share certain things, in this case, you're sharing an office space.
Yeah.
I tend to use that when I go to different cities in other states, even in L.A. or El Segundo.
Right.
And I think the question from a lot of people when we first encountered that was, that's not what we have in Bellflower. My viewpoint is, that's great, because that's what Bellflower is becoming. And so I've stayed at WoodSpring Suites myself, as a business traveler. I can tell you that the properties that I stayed in were not new, not necessarily like brand-new, they were probably two, three years old.
Okay.
My experience in these properties were that they were very well-maintained, very comfortable, and so I'm hoping, I can't read the future, but I'm hoping that that type of investment, creating jobs here, will be a nice catalyst in that portion of our city so we can start improving that area as well. And I'm thankful that somebody's willing to come into our city and invest that type of money, so I'm hoping that it'll work out, so. And right now, the questions that I asked in the beginning about security and maintenance, that's why I asked those questions, because I received that email from that concerned resident. There were valid points, and I wanted to make sure that we had that flexibility to be able to insert that into the discussion, because if we don't, then I'm second-guessing things. But if we have that flexibility in the future to be able to make, to ensure that this is a quality project, that's what I want, that's what I think we all want up here, so. I just wanted to make those comments.
Yeah, I mean, and I understand, you know, I mean, you guys are doing a good job of revitalizing the Boulevard and helping new restaurants, and I think Stillcraft is gonna be, you know, I think that's gonna be a great thing for our city. It's gonna bring in, you know, young, old, it's, that, we've gone to the one in Long Beach, and I think that's gonna be a... It's gonna bring in, you know, young, old, it's, that, we've gone to the one in Long Beach, and I think that's gonna be a great thing.
And in terms, sorry, just a quick, in terms of the market changing here, there's another hotel project that's going down, up down the street from there. And I could tell you since, when that project was initiated till now, that project's going from a regular hotel to now being a branded hotel. There's another national brand, a chain that's interested in, in branding that hotel because of the change that's going on in Bellflower. So that's exciting, so.
Okay, okay, yeah. I just, I mean, the, the reviews I read on the ones in Sacramento and Bakersfield, well, the one, I don't remember which one it was. I think it was the one in, I think it was the one in Sacramento. I'm sorry? Well, I did. I mean, I would think, you know, they would be a little higher, you know, a little nicer hotels are a little higher. Like I said, these are comparable to the Motel Six around the corner, which is a little bothersome. Yeah, I, I, I hope so. But I mean, they, that was a Value Inn prior to that, which had good reviews. And then when it converted to the Wood Springs, it went downhill. I'm sorry? It was, I think it was called a Value Inn, a value place? Okay, okay. And, and somebody had stated, you know, before it was a value place. But then when it came, became a Wood Springs Extended Stay, the reviews were terrible. And it's like, so...
Could be the franchisee though, too.
That's true. I know, and, and that's what I said. I did know at the time that, you know, they were a separate franchise. So, but that was just what I was seeing on that. So, I mean, I just don't wanna see this turn into our local motels, you know. I, I hope not, so...
Priscilla, this came to us several months ago. And when it, I know this isn't gonna fly in this town after the trouble we've had, we've closed down a couple of them.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's been a, an education process for us and staff to, to get where we are here tonight, today. And again, there's, you know, thirteen years that nothing's happened on that property. And, and this is what's been raised in the question. This is not the first hotel that wanted to come, you know, for that parcel or whatever. But we've kinda seen that after thirteen years, and next to a freeway, you have that kind of land. And, you know, you know as well as I do that the whole, we wanna develop that whole site all the way to Downey. And nothing's happened. You know, of course, we don't wanna take, we, or, you know, my motto is, don't take the first thing that comes. But at one point in time...
Well, and I was hoping that's not what was happening.
Yeah, that's not what's happening.
We're so desperate for the revenue that we're going to...
No, that is not, this is not the first one. Yeah, no, there's been, you know, there's all kinds of ideas too done.
We need retail. We really need retail. The only thing we spend our money on at Bellflower, I'll be honest, is eating and getting gas. Everything else I go out to the city for, because there's nothing here to shop. I mean, let's be honest, there's nothing here to shop, so unfortunately, my money's going out of the city.
Yeah, there's, like as Mr. Garza said, the catalyst. There's other pieces of parcels there that got, getting some legs and growing. And then the market that closed across the street, then maybe if this comes to attrition, then something, the shopping center will come viable again or something, and, you know, I don't know. But our, yeah, my guard is up over this whole thing.
I, I hope so.
I wanna share with you.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that, so, okay, thank you.
Good comments, thank you.
Y'all know me, I'm Mrs. Brown's husband. These are gonna be franchisees hotels, or motel hotels. What is to prevent the franchisee from reselling the property after they've purchased the property? You know, what is the contract gonna be for the franchisees holding the property? And what are the safeguards that we're gonna have that the franchisee will not just dump the property if they become skittish or for whatever reason? Now, that's a, a question for the gentleman.
Well, no, we can answer a portion of it. The, the, the safeguards for us initially are the development standards required by the city on the hotel site and the flags that will be required by the city for potential hotel uses. So one of the things that will be built into the developer agreement here is they come in with one flag, they're not gonna step down. They can move up, they can't move down. So if a franchisee wants to come in and buy the property and upgrade the flag of the hotel, we'd probably be all for that. But they're not gonna come back and put a lower-grade hotel in just because they're gonna feed additional need. That's not something the city's gonna go for, and we'll build that guarantee into the developer agreement.
Okay, and one of the other questions I did, or comments, is the four units, or four buildings they showed in Florida, they're all in travel destinations. You got Disney World, that area. I mean, there is just a tremendous amount of tourism in that whole area. You know, Dade County, Palm Beach, that's tourist destination. I mean, that, again, as Priscilla stated, we're not a tourist destination. I mean, we're a pass-through city. And granted, if the pass-through is, you know, working-class people, hey, need a place to stay for a couple of days because they're working ten miles away, you know, fantastic. I see no problem with that. But again, with the previous dumps that we have in this city, and we can go up and down Downey, Artesia, Lakewood, and spot 'em all. You know, again, that's just not one thing, one more thing I wanna see in the city. And I think you all have addressed that pretty well. But, you know, again, the gentleman from Wood Springs can address the franchisee question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wanna talk on this item? Okay, let's hear from Gold Coast.
I, I first wanna say I appreciate your comments. And, and I really, I really truly, if, if I would come in here and there would be no public comment, I would be, I would be concerned. It really shows the type of community we're coming in, the type of community we want to come into. So, thank you, thank you for that. I guess I wanna start off with talking about why another hotel. We're, we're not a, like we said, we're not a motel. We are a hotel. We have a different type of clientele. We're not an hourly-rate hotel motel. We're a weekly. So we're bringing in, in, in that business traveler, we're bringing in that traveling, like I said, the traveling nurse, the, the, the construction worker. And we find that if you have access to a freeway, they can find you more easily and they can get to where they need to go much more easily than if you're, if you're not next to a freeway. So that's why we chose Bellflower being right there on the ninety-one corridor. As far as the concern about, about safety, that is a huge concern of ours in all of our hotels. It's a huge concern in every brand. Our, for our guests to get to their room, they've either gotta have a key card to get in through an exterior exit, or they've gotta come through the lobby, which is also requires a key card. You can't walk into the lobby in the Wood Springs Suites and then walk into the, into the corridor. You still have to have the card to your room to be able to get access to the corridor. Our hours of operation for somebody being at the registration desk, seven a.m. to eleven p.m. After that, then the safety attendant takes over. So we're, that, that registration desk is open for a very considerable amount of time. As far as, as, as having pots and pans available, we found that our guests don't want to use, reuse something that somebody else has already had. So stocking that in the room, it doesn't get used. Because people view that as that's somebody else's, somebody else's cooked on that. I don't, I don't wanna have to use the plate that somebody else has eaten on. So we offer them at a low amount of money, so that they, they can, even if they're staying for a couple of weeks. It makes sense. Go ahead and buy that. I, I know there's not a shopping center close by right now, but I've, I've heard from certain people that there, there may be one coming soon, and I know we're working towards that. And that's, that's huge, and I, I, that's huge for any community. That would be very helpful to our business as well. So we, we would support that wholeheartedly and, and hope that that does happen. Sorry, I tried to, tried to gather everything.
Yeah, I want you to address the, the long-term...
Long-term versus short-term.
Long-term still, yeah, like the twenty-eight days of California law and, and...
Right. We're not getting around anything. What we're doing is a...
Keeping your eviction rights.
Yeah, not only keeping the eviction rights, but also keeping the tax revenue coming into the, into the city. So if you go longer than that, then you're, you lose your tax.
Okay, it's not a transient tax no more.
It's not a transient tax. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we wanna do that as well.
Do you have any guests that stay for, so, you know, somebody, contractor comes out ninety, they got a ninety-day job or a six-month job?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. It's, it's maybe ten percent of our guests would, would be that length of stay. In, in our hotel in Miami that's, that's currently open. Because of the hurricane that went through there last year, we've got guests that, that are staying there for, you know, six months. Not only guests that, that were impacted, but also workers coming in. You know, your, your electrical line workers, your, your construction workers coming in to rebuild.
How does that work? After twenty-eight days, you, you make the guests check out? For twenty-four hours, or?
They don't, you check them out on paper.
On paper.
So you don't have to take them out of their room. You don't have to take everything out and go...
And then you rerun the credit card or something?
Rerun the credit card.
Gotcha.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so what I was getting at about rates now, I thought you had mentioned like four ninety-nine or five hundred dollars for seven days? Is that what you said earlier?
Yeah, it's four ninety-nine for seven days. That's, that's a start.
Well, I get it, that's two thousand dollars a month, and you can rent a one-bedroom something for less than two thousand a month. So like, that's where I was going with the analogy in my head.
And, and, and we're, we're not Motel Six, so... I'm not sure where the rates are gonna be starting out on that. I would, I would guess we're somewhere in the hundred and twenty-six dollar a night range.
So a little more. If you were staying seven days there, it'd be more.
It'd be much more expensive.
And then that's why you have the breakfast there and more, a little bit more amenities.
That's for, that's for your...
A little more decor and lounges.
For your, for your guests that's on vacation, that's, you know, just coming, traveling through.
And who's the guest that stays there? Somebody... Who's the guest that stays at a sleep-in? Who's their target person?
The target on, on that is, is your, you know, your family that's traveling through, your, your businessman that's gonna be here just for a night or two, not for an extended period of time.
And you've seen market studies, there's a demand there for that.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes.
Here, see...
I've got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
When we talked about a destination point, how in Florida you have all these attractions. Now, would your clientele be too far to go to Disneyland or Knott's Berry Farm or the Long Beach Aquarium, or the Rams game or the Chargers game? Are, would, in the hotel business, do you need to be close to that venue in order to be able to use that venue? Or, or will you travel twenty miles to get there?
Oh, they would travel twenty miles to get there. But actually, we're closer to Disneyland, we would be closer to Disneyland than we are in Miami to Disney World. We're four hours away from Disney World.
And still attract clientele to go there all the time?
We don't attract that type of clientele. Our clientele is the, the traveling nurse, the business, you know, the salesman that wants a base of operations.
So do you envision people on vacation coming to Bellflower to use any of these other types of entertainment places, or not really?
I would say yes. I mean, with, with the, you know, as close proximity as we are to Disney, they would absolutely use that. It would be, it would be very economical for, for a family to do that, rather than staying there.
Yeah, the rate would be much better than staying on Beach Boulevard, or, you know. That's all I have.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, one question. Can you address the, the concern about prostitution?
So, I can. Our, our, our guests are required, number one, to, the only way you can, you can stay in our hotels is if you have a credit card. So that's, that's your first line of defense. You have to be able to, to reserve a room and, and pay for a room, you, you have to have a credit card. We pick it, we, we take pride in, in, in our operations and, and keep a very close eye on what's going on in our hotels. We are not absent owners. We, we have a, a management group that we make sure, that does make sure that they're, they're constantly in that hotel, that they're paying attention to the activities that are going on in the hotel. And if there's anything that is, is illegal or is not, not appropriate, those, those, those guests are evicted immediately.
I mean, is that, that's, that's not the average walk-up motel where somebody's walking, getting a room for an hour and a half or two hours, whatever, leaves?
I would say probably seventy-eight percent of our, our...
Seventy, seventy-eight percent, okay. Well, that's probably exactly that, right? You probably know that. So those are eight-hundred number confirmations of reservations coming in. People confirm their room with their credit cards, and they pay. So you don't have a serious number of walk-ups or drive-ups, I should say, saying, I need a room that night. That's the small percentage of business.
That's a very small percentage of business.
And the same thing at the Wood Springs side, that's all advanced registration, I presume, right? You're not just gonna walk up and say, I need a room for two weeks, and you're gonna plan that out and book it ahead of time, correct?
Yeah, and that was one of the, you know, that's one, one great thing that we like about being a, a part of the Choice brand, the Choice...
Yeah, yeah.
Is, is that we have that ability.
So there's a strong network of reservations.
Reservation system, yeah.
Can I, can I continue my questions?
Yes.
Okay. Have you had an issue with other, other locations?
Have we had an issue?
Yeah, have you had an issue?
We have not.
You have not, okay. Very good. And I hope that you won't have it here.
We, we will, we will do our very best to make sure that we don't.
So again, what, what is your long-term, what's the company's long-term goal in terms of expansion?
So we are, we are targeting five locations in, in the L.A. area, Bellflower being, being one of those five. Overall, as a company, we hope to have, have in the next seven to fifteen years, thirty hotels.
How many?
Thirty.
Thirty, wow.
Across the United States.
And when was this company start?
Three years ago.
Three years ago. Well, that's a very aggressive expansion plan.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Are you exclusively brokering for this company, or do you build other hotels for other flags?
I only work for Gold Coast.
Okay, and Gold Coast works with this, they work with other flags that have sides?
Our, no, we, we just, just Choice.
Oh, I see, okay.
Just, and, and we are, we are primarily Wood Springs franchisee.
Excellent.
So to answer the question about, you know, selling off the franchise, we would not sell off a Wood Springs franchise, but are potentially looking at not, not owning the Sleep Inn.
But the Choice brand, you may franchise out.
Yeah. Well, they're both Choice brands, but the Sleep Inn would be...
Right, the Sleep, yeah, that's the one, that's the franchise model. There's not a franchise model for the Wood Springs.
Yes, there is.
Oh, there is a franchise model.
It is a franchise hotel.
It is a franchise, but I thought you just said you weren't gonna franchise the Wood Springs.
It's a suite of hotels.
Oh, the suite, okay, got it. I traveled down and then, and, and I've seen, I'm just, it's like, seems to be that I've seen a new business model over the last five years that where you have a, a different, you have two hotels of the same brand on the site, two standalone hotels, what you're exactly doing. And I kinda says, oh, there's a little price difference. I've seen Hilton do it. I've seen none of these little business hotels, but having the two brands, and we all know who, they're the same company, but they have a little lower of, you know, fee on one and a little upper end. Is that the model in the industry now, is to go after the market for different incomes?
I think there, there is within Marriott and Hilton, like you said, to have that. That's not our goal here. Our goal here is to...
Short stay and long stay.
Short stay and long stay.
Got it. And then... You said five locations were coming to the L.A. area or whatever. Are those dual locations also, or just standalones?
They're, they're just single Wood Springs.
Saying, okay, this is a, if you have the land, this is what you do with the dual.
Yes.
Okay. That was all my comments and questions.
We did?
We're good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You betcha. I think we got enough info.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sunny Santinaz, and a second by Councilmember Garza. Without objection, that will be the order. Okay, what's your pleasure?
I think I just want to go over the, some of the negotiating points to make sure that we give clear direction to City Manager.
Okay.
So, and I think we heard about security is one of them.
Maintenance.
And then the no hourly rate, no hourly occupancy, and then no trading down if they have to sell the property. Wanna make sure that is in place.
The flag can only go up, not down.
Can go up. Okay. Anything else? Just to make sure that... Right, Bellflower first.
I'm sorry, we can build that into the development agreement.
Right, mhm. Right, mhm.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm going through my notes.
We got it?
Yeah.
We got it?
I think we got it.
Yeah, I think that was it all.
Was it, okay.
This is what I got written down.
Okay. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of City of Bellflower to adopt Resolution eighteen dash sixty-six, a resolution authorizing the city manager to ex, to execute purchase and sale agreement filed number eight-one-nine in a form approved by the city attorney for Gold Coast Property CA five LLC for the disposition of real property located at eight-eight-two-seven, eight-two-eight-eight-two-nine Artesia Boulevard and eight-eight-eight-hundred Palm Street.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Mayor Protem Sunny Santinez, and a second by Councilmember Juan Garza. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart, eleven B.
Though consideration and possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider granting an oil pipeline franchise to Paramount Petroleum Corporation and Cardinal Pipeline LP and to read by title only, wait further reading and introduce following ordinances. One, ordinance number thirteen sixty-four, an ordinance granting Paramount Petroleum Corporation oil pipeline franchise within the city of Bellflower. And two, ordinance number thirteen sixty-five, an ordinance granting Cardinal Pipeline LP and oil pipeline franchise within the city of Bellflower.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Staff report. I'm getting the computer turned on and set up, one moment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight I am bringing forward item eleven B, a public hearing to consider granting oil pipeline franchises to Paramount Petroleum Corporation and Cardinal Pipeline LP. I will begin with some background on the two types of pipelines there are. There are public pipelines and non-public pipelines. Paramount is requesting that the city grant a public oil pipeline franchise. Public pipelines are known in the industry as common carrier pipelines. They can be utilized by refiners, marketers, and others who wish to transport oil products in exchange for payment to the owner of the pipeline. The franchise fees for these public pipelines are set by the CPUC and are non-negotiable. The second type of pipeline is a non-public pipeline. These are known in the industry as non-common carrier pipelines. They are proprietary pipelines used exclusively by the owner of the pipeline. The franchise fees for these non-public pipelines are negotiable. Cardinal is requesting that the city grant a non-public pipeline franchise. Ordinance number thirteen sixty-four would grant a public pipeline franchise to Paramount. In September twenty-fourteen, Paramount sold to Cardinal seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-one linear feet of its pipeline, leaving Paramount with the remaining one hundred and forty linear feet. Agreement file number three-one-seven, a public utility oil pipeline franchise with Paramount, expired on January second, twenty sixteen. However, Paramount continued to implement the requirements set forth in the agreement. On April third, twenty eighteen, the city received a letter from Paramount requesting a renewal of the franchise agreement. The city and Paramount then negotiated the terms of the franchise agreement. If the city council adopts ordinance number thirteen sixty-four, the franchise would be in effect for the ten-year period beginning retroactively on January third, twenty sixteen, and continuing through January second, twenty twenty-six. If granted, the franchise, Paramount must maintain all property in compliance with city, state, and federal rules and regulations. This includes conducting hydrostatic testing of the pipeline every five years as required by the Office of the State Fire Marshal for active pipelines containing hazardous liquid. The most recent hydrostatic test for this pipeline was completed in September of twenty-fourteen, and it is currently active transport, transporting crude oil. Ordinance number thirteen sixty-five would grant a non-public pipeline franchise to Cardinal. On April third, twenty eighteen, the city received a letter from Cardinal requesting a non-public franchise agreement reflecting the seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-one linear feet of existing pipeline that was purchased from Paramount. The city and Cardinal then negotiated the terms of the proposed franchise agreement. If the city council adopts ordinance number thirteen sixty-five, the franchise would be in effect for the ten-year period beginning retroactively on January third, twenty sixteen, and continuing through January second, twenty twenty-six. If granted, the franchise, Cardinal must maintain all franchise property in compliance with all city, state, and federal rules and regulations. This includes conducting hydrostatic testing of the pipeline every five years as required by the state fire marshal for active pipelines containing hazardous liquid. The most recent hydrostatic test for this pipeline was completed in March nineteen ninety-four, when the line was active with hazardous liquid. The pipeline has contained non-hazardous nitrogen since then. Therefore, a hydrostatic test has not been required by the state fire marshal. However, if Cardinal decides to use the pipeline for hazardous liquids, then a hydrostatic test would be required prior to placing any hazardous liquids into the pipeline. The map here shows a portion of pipeline that would be belonging to Paramount under ordinance number thirteen sixty-four. It is one hundred and forty linear feet. And this map shows a portion of the pipeline that would be belonging to Cardinal under ordinance number thirteen sixty-five. This portion of pipeline is seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-one linear feet. And here we have the agreement terms for Paramount and Cardinal. The duration of the agreement for both would be for ten years with up to four, five-year renewals. For Paramount, the granting fee and renewal fees are not applicable since they are public pipelines. For Cardinal, the granting fee is ten thousand dollars, and the renewal fee is six thousand dollars. This renewal fee would be paid every five years if Cardinal renews their agreement. The performance bond for both Paramount and Cardinal is one hundred thousand dollars. The performance bond is provided to ensure that both parties comply with the terms set forth in the agreement, such as complying with state laws and regulations and paying their annual fees. And here I have an example of the twenty-seventeen annual fees for Paramount and Cardinal. For Paramount, for the one hundred and forty linear fee, their twenty-seventeen annual fee was twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and for Cardinal, there was fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-six cents. Lastly, I will recap the approval process. On September twenty-fourth, the city council adopted a resolution of intention to grant. On October fourth and eighteenth, twenty eighteen, the city published a notice of public hearing in the LA Wave newspaper. Tonight, the city council will conduct a public hearing and introduce the ordinances, and tentatively, on November thirteenth, the ordinances will be adopted if approved Our recommendation at this time is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, read by title only, wait further reading, and introduce ordinance numbers thirteen sixty-four and thirteen sixty-five, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my presentation. Once again, my name is Natalie, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I'd also like to point out that we have April Harvey here from Cardinal to answer any technical questions.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions of staff? Mr. Garza?
I do, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation, it was really good. For the Paramount line, so just to clarify, what's being transmitted through that line is crude oil?
Yes.
And that's it?
Yes.
Okay. And then for the Cardinal pipeline, if in the future any hazardous liquids are transmitted through that, I know there's certain parties that would be informed of that, would the city be one of those parties that's informed of that as well?
Yes, under the ordinance, they would have to notify us of that, and they would also have to.
I think so. But I wanted to make sure that we, because sometimes things can go to the state, they don't come to us, and then, you know, we're caught shorthanded, so, but I wanted to make sure we would be informed if that ever happens in the future, so.
Yes, we would have to be informed.
Great, thank you. That completes my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Mister?
And Natalie, this is your first presentation, right?
Yes.
Okay, you did well.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. First one is, actually, on this, the Paramount rate on the annual fee of twenty-seven fifty, I like the first amount that you put in your staff report of forty-seven dollars and three cents.
Yeah, that, we had to adjust.
I like that, much better than twenty-seven fifty, so I was disappointed when it went down.
Yeah, unfortunately, we used a different CPI adjustment.
Anyway, to follow up, any question for Councilmember Garza? If, if and when, if Cardinal decide to transport hazardous material to the, the pipes, will there be a sep, a, a new granting fee given to Bellflower?
I don't believe there would be a new granting fee for that.
That, that's correct. There would not be a granting fee, they would just have to notify us.
Just notify us.
Transporting, correct, because they would already have the right to transport petroleum products.
All right. Okay, that's all, thank you.
I'm good. You're good? I'm good, too. Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Some of.
Second?
Motion on the floor in a second, without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody out in, the audience would like to come forward and discuss this item?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Hi, Anita.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
City Council, thank you very much. I, I have a question. Paramount Pipeline, are they part of the Para, Paramount Petroleum?
I would.
Used to be part of the.
I would think that is the case, yeah.
Yes, it is Paramount Petroleum.
Okay, so, first of all, I read that Paramount Petroleum has now been taken over by World Oil as of March. First question. Second question, or second comment. Paramount Petroleum was a big, big mess in the city of Paramount with Hexaval and Sea. And they were really bad and fought tooth and nail and would not do anything for the citizens in that community.
We're talking about a pipeline that goes under the Bellflower.
If Paramount Pipeline wants to put hazardous materials through those lines?
I believe they already do. There's other pipelines going through under our, under our city all over the place.
Through Paramount?
From, from there, yes, all over. There's so many other pipelines under this, under these streets of Bellflower, you'd be surprised.
Okay, well, I'm just concerned about them because of their past attitudes, so I just wanted to make that a matter of my concern.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think the, the problem you're talking about is maybe the refining part where it goes into the air. This is a raw product that gets pumped into a pipeline that goes, who knows, it goes down to San Diego, maybe, I don't know.
No, I'm just talking about the fact that they were very cooperative and they fought tooth and nail, and, so I just wanted to make you aware that, watch them, as far as, in my opinion, they need to be.
And my best guess about the entity maybe changing names or whatever, it's the, when somebody buys a corporation, whatever, you get the whole kit and caboodle if it's negotiated, so, yeah. Yeah.
But I'm not sure that, because Paramount Pipeline is a different name now? It's not Paramount Petroleum, apparently?
We don't know. We don't know. Yeah, and it's, and it's, yeah, and then you have Cardinal.
That's what I'm saying, if they are, then this is all no problem.
We'll find out, I mean, if it's a.
That's why I'm just making you aware.
I understand, if it's a corporation doing business as Paramount Pipeline, we'll double check, we'll make sure that we have the proper engagement on that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Anita.
Oh, I should, I missed.
Anybody else wishing to come forward and speak on this item?
Close the public hearing?
Second.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of City of Bellflower to introduce ordinance thirteen sixty-four, an ordinance granting the Paramount Petroleum Corporation an oil pipeline franchise within the city of Bellflower. An ordinance number thirteen sixty-five, an ordinance granting Cardinal Pipeline LP an oil pipeline franchise within the city of Bellflower, and wait further reading.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Sixty-four.
You said only one of them.
Nope. I did both.
Oh, you didn't, oh, no, maybe only one here.
I'll second both.
Got it. Got a motion on the floor in a second? Call roll, please.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Item twelve A.
So we finished public hearings. First up is ordinance, I'm sorry, consideration and possible action to read by title only, wait further reading, and introduce ordinance number thirteen sixty-seven, an ordinance amending Bellflower Municipal Code Chapter one-point-one-two, authorizing immediate imposition of administrative fines for violating building plumbing, electrical, and other similar structural health, safety, and zoning regulations where those violations exist as a result, or to facilitate unauthorized cannabis cultivation pursuant to Government Code Section five-three-zero-six-nine-point-four. I believe we have deputy city attorney, I gave her that title, Natalie Carpos, to make the presentation to you tonight.
Oh, yeah. Welcome down, Natalie. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Honorable Mayor and honorable members of the City Council, I'm here to present item twelve A. So existing law under Government Code Section five-three-zero-six-nine-point-four allows the city to adopt by ordinance, a, to enforce code violations through the imposition of administrative citations, so long as the city ordinance also includes certain procedural requirements. And these requirements are adopted under Chapter one-point-twelve of the Bellflower Municipal Code, and they're specified in Section one-point-twelve-zero-four-zero of the Municipal Code, which provides that when a building, plumbing, electrical, structural, or zoning violation exists, the city must provide the violator with a reasonable amount of time to cure the violation before administrative citations can be imposed. The only time that the city is allowed to forego this reasonable time requirement and impose immediate sites would be if the violation poses a threat or immediate danger to health or safety. So absent that, the city must give the violator a reasonable opportunity to comply in order to cure the violation. On September tenth of two thousand and eighteen, the governor signed Assembly Bill twenty-one-sixty-four. This bill amends Government Code Section five-three-zero-six-nine-point-four to allow for the immediate imposition of fines when a building, plumbing, electrical, zoning, structural, health, or safety violation exists as a result of, or to facilitate cannabis cultivation. So, no reasonable time first where the violation exists because of illegal cultivation of cannabis. This amendment would help the city to add another layer of enforcement to the regulations that we currently have in place to help curb bad, bad actors more quickly and efficiently. So why the need for an amendment? The state has created its own licensing scheme, and part of that licensing scheme includes the payment of licenses, permits, and a trace and track system, as far as the state is concerned. The city of Bellflower has a similar permitting program for cannabis-related activities, and it also issues a limited number of permits per city. So both the state and the city permits and licenses are costly, and with regard to the city, they're only issued on a limited basis, which creates an incentive for some persons to evade applicable rules and undercut the city's requirements by cultivating illegally. Furthermore, these illegal cultivators try to. Furthermore, these illegal cultivators try to avoid detection by operating in homes or strip malls, vacant warehouses, and because of the lucrative nature of cannabis cultivation, what oftentimes happens is the homes are gutted in order to provide for increased plant operations, and that can also lead to tampering with electricity, with water, improper ventilation, any one of those circumstances which could seriously threaten health and safety, not only for the structure itself, but also for neighboring properties. Law enforcement research in support of AB twenty-one sixty-four found that giving the violators additional time only resulted in a flux of activity until the deadline date. And so what would happen is, these operations would increase up until the deadline date, the violators would leave, they wouldn't have to pay the fines, and they've collected whatever monies they can, and they've kind of left the city in a lurch. So, as I mentioned earlier, the amendments proposed by the ordinance would not affect any of the city's existing code enforcement options. We would still be able to impose daily administrative fines and utilize other enforcement techniques. This would just be one other mechanism that we can use in order to gain compliance. So the proposed amendments before you are twofold. The first proposed amendment is on page four of item twelve A, and would provide that unless certain proposed circumstances are true, the city may immediately issue an administrative fine when a building, plumbing, electrical, structural, or zoning violation exists as a result of or to facilitate cannabis cultivation. The amendments are designated by double underline, and they closely track the amendments in Government Code Section five-three-zero-six-nine-point-four. And the second proposed amendment is more of a cleanup item, and that would just address the definition of hearing officer as it relates to administrative citation appeals, and it would include that the city manager or his or her designee would be defined as a hearing officer under that section. So just to recap, the proposed amendments would add to the regulation and enforcement tools that currently exist in the Municipal Code, and that staff recommends that the City Council adopt ordinance number thirteen sixty-seven, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you Natalie, any questions to staff? I'm not seeing any.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. So the proposed amendment deals with basically with cannabis cultivation, right? That was the specific thrust of the amendment, correct?
That is correct.
So, I guess, just want to clarify this. So the exemption in terms of being able to cite immediately is, if it's an owner-operator, the exemption doesn't apply?
So let me clarify.
So, what I'm saying here is, so there's no tenant, so the owner of the property is the one cultivating?
Yes.
So it becomes immediate in that case?
Yes.
Because there's no loophole, so to speak, in terms of notifying the tenant and things like, and so on and so forth?
No, because you still have a property owner who could be held responsible in order to bring the property into compliance. Just because there isn't a tenant, doesn't mean that there isn't a responsible party to which the fines would attach, or the circumstances were attached.
So what I'm saying is, the citation is going to be immediate?
In this instance?
In the instance where it's the owner-operator, the owner of the property is the one cultivating, and he tampered with the plumbing and things like that, if the city finds out about it, immediately the citation takes into effect?
Yes.
It is dangerous.
Okay, that's why I want to clarify that, because there's no excuse for him not to know, because he's the operator.
Correct.
All right, very good, thank you.
I'd like to introduce ordinance number thirteen sixty-seven, an ordinance amending the Bellflower Municipal Code Chapter one point one-two, authorizing immediate imposition of administrative fines for violating the building, plumbing, electrical, and similar structural health, safety, or zoning regulations where these violations exist as a result to facilitate unauthorized cannabis cultivation pursuant to Government Code five-three-zero-six-nine-point-four, and waive further reading. Second. Call roll please.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay, twelve B, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to adopt Resolution number eighteen dash sixty-seven, a resolution repealing City Bellflower Resolution number seventeen dash three-three, adopted June twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, and restating the city's position to support with conditions of potential use of a twenty-three acre parcel Lakewood-Sumerset site located east of Lakewood Boulevard and south of Somerset Boulevard as a potentially appropriate location for the placement of the Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority Light Rail Maintenance Facility. The reason this comes before the council tonight is, if you'll remember back, in last summer, we adopted a resolution that opposed the sale of that land for any maintenance facility, period. And we did that as kind of a lockstep because we were thinking of rail maintenance yards that were akin to the large maintenance yard in Bell, California, or Colton, California, the big ones there. Subsequent to that, the city has been on several tours, has looked at the maintenance facilities in Monrovia, Santa Monica, and other locations, has looked at its conformance of the neighborhoods, and has looked at its own needs with regard to what that site could be used for and how it would best serve the general public, and also the potential economic benefit of selling that site, and the benefit of the paintball operation going a different direction. In short answer, we've come up with a resolution that supports with numerous conditions the sale of that property for a market price. There are several conditions built in that would require significant replacement of lost, a potential lost open space in recreation facilities on that site and other locations in the city. We'd want a market rate for the site, the leaseholder on the site would have to be made whole, that's up to the MTA. We want a Bellflower preference on hiring on that site if they were to approve this resolution, and other protective issues, and making sure that the site is designed with the neighborhood, the residential and the commercial neighborhood, in conformance with their needs, and including all the necessary sequel steps for noise and air pollution and other studies. So, what we have is an ideal circumstance for the reuse of that site for a rail maintenance facility if the conditions are met, and we're looking for council action to take, to adopt the resolution on that, that would allow that discussion to move forward to the MTA as opposed to the block that we currently have. What's your pleasure, guys?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, just to piggyback a little bit on the city manager's comments, first of all, great job on the report, I think it completely captures our position. I do want to point out though that nothing is assured, nothing is guaranteed that if this site proceeds, it's going to be selected as a maintenance yard. All this does is rescinds our prior resolution, and it allows us to be considered for this project for the maintenance yard to be located here. There are other sites that Metro is considering to locate this yard in. The sense that we get, and the city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the sense that I get is that this would probably be the favored location, but again, there's nothing guaranteed, there's a lot of negotiation that would need to happen, and so, but I wanted to put that out there, but I absolutely, if there's no questions or comments, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a few questions here, for a point of clarification. On the, one of the conditions here in terms of number three, the purchase price paid for the property will be based on a fair market value and sufficient to offset the cost, so we're just basically looking for an even exchange?
We're looking for the max value of the property, whatever that turns out to be, and if it turns out to be that they're replacing open space, I don't know that you'd get a like-for-like exchange as far as acreage, but we want to make sure that the purchase price of the property allows the city to offset the loss of that open space. For instance, one case in point is to max out Thompson Park. If there's ever opportunity to buy the Pace School there, we'd want to have the funds in place to do that, so wherever we could maximize that use is what we're looking for there.
So it's not a one-to-one exchange of the space?
You know, obviously, that's the ideal, we do a one-for-one exchange, but the odds of getting twenty-three additional acres for open space development in this community are pretty slim. What we want to make sure is that we get fair value, and including, you know, and what I forgot to mention was, a minimum of an acre and a half usable open space unprogrammed for the city now, the city could program it, available on that site itself, which is ahead of where we're at.
That's number five.
Yeah, so what we have now is we have a twenty-three acre site that's under lease to a contractor, and we have no viable open space for use by the residents unless they pay to go use paintball. What we want to make sure is that on that site, we have a viable decent-sized open space that's available to the public to use it as the city wishes open space to be used for free.
So the one point five is going to be carved out of the existing space?
Correct. And then we want to use the remainder of the funds, that would be over and above the purchase price of the maintenance facility, if, as Mr. Garza indicates, we get that far, that we could maximize the other open space in the community. Can I promise it'd be a one-for-one replacement? No, I can't, because there's just no way to know. Can I promise we would be able to develop quality open space and recreational development on our current sites? Yes, with the money that we could get out of this site.
Okay, on item number four, what is the value of the three percent local match? Do you have any kind of dollar amount?
So what has, as, we, one of the things that's been unaddressed on the West San Ant extension, as the orange line is known here, is that they require that the city makes up out of its measure R funds, is that what it's measured?
Measure M and measure R.
Measure R funds. They make up three percent of the total cost of construction within that right-of-way of the city. So if it's a mile and a half, they want three percent of the construction of doing that mile and a half. What that number means, we don't know. But if we do allow that a maintenance facility is built in Bellflower, we want to make sure that the city does not have to pay that three percent of its measure R, they can use it for other construction projects.
So we don't have any ballpark amount at this point?
You know way to know.
We don't know.
Anything I spit out would be wrong, so I just, we just don't know. And we don't know how it's going to be assessed, and as Mr. Garza will tell you, that I have all sorts of concerns that there's cities up the line that can't pay it, they're going to make it up in other cities, and it's crazy. So, if you're looking at a six billion dollar product, and you amortize that over twenty-four mile length of track, you take three percent of that, it comes up with a rough number, it's a pretty big number.
So, so what will the city benefit out of this?
The city would benefit that it would have, it would have, it would have usable open space at a site where it has no usable open space now, that's all pay-to-play, open space. Two, it would have significant funding because we believe the value of that, the last time we received an unsolicited, I don't even know what the funding is, but the last time we received an unsolicited proposal for that property, it was twenty-three million dollars. So we would have a significant amount of money to develop, revitalize, and purchase additional open space in the community with those funds, and that's what that means.
Yeah, because on the flip side, you know, if we turn this into a maintenance yard, then we're going to lose the revenue coming out of-
Correct.
Hollywood sports.
Hollywood sports.
So in the meantime, so what you're getting at here is, the primary benefit for the city is the fair market value that will be paid to us.
And-
That's the key.
And the three percent, which is part of it, which will be a significant figure, and those funds remain available for other products throughout the city.
Okay.
And if I could just add, I think what we also gain is, if we have a Bellflower first policy, and Metro has said that they would be open to that, you know, that gains jobs for residents in our city. On top of that, there's value in the land itself, but there's also value in the fact that we're losing open space.
Right.
That's a different value point, and those, what that gains is that we've already been identified as being park deficient, so Metro is very aware of that, so we would be losing even more open space, and so Metro has already conceded that, that we can benefit by transferring that value and investing it in other parts of our city. An example would be like Coke Park.
Right.
There's other areas that we can have Metro reimburse this in for the value of that-
And possibly some open space.
Correct.
If we enter those discussions, there are consultants that can help place the value on replacement recreation opportunity, and we could develop a planning concert with the MTA and develop a price that would be requisite for that.
So the main advantage is, it's in a location that will demand a higher value, which will going to benefit us, and we can purchase open space in other less valued areas in the city.
Correct, okay, so-
So that's what I'm getting at.
Here's what it is, we have a long-term leaseholder of that site now, we know what the use is, we know what the use is going to be for the foreseeable future, and it's fine, we have no issue with the lease on that. What this gives us is an opportunity to plan for the future on this, if we could use this site for something else, and it gives us the means to do some alternative planning to provide recreation opportunities we've never thought of before. Let's presume, for instance, the current leaseholder of the site decides they don't want to run that business anymore, and they shut the operation down. Well, we're stuck with a couple of plausible options, to reuse the site, find another user, or develop the site itself, twenty-three acres unused, unprogrammed, with money we don't have. And what this does, it gives us a chance to rethink our open space and recreation opportunities in the city, and there's enough money to make that work, I would believe in the end.
And to the point on the three percent, we've asked that question of Metro, we need to know how much that three percent is, because that's what we're going to have to actually contribute for the construction of this line. Metro hasn't provided, they don't even know yet, so we wish we had an answer, we don't have it yet, but the fact that this could potentially be millions and millions of dollars that won't have to come out of our coffers, that would be covered by this project on top of all the other benefits, could be potentially a benefit for our city, so.
Okay. So ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So I've heard historically that this line could cost a billion dollars a mile. Have you guys ever heard that figure?
Yeah.
So that's-
It could well, but it could.
I've heard that figure, we've heard that.
It's a billion, just a point of correction, it's a billion if it's underground.
Right, okay.
So the portion that's within the city of LA? So this is that grade here, the underground portions are a billion a mile, yes. Everything that's at grade is-
Underground, oh, totally.
You know, Mr. Garza knows this better, I think, what are they estimating, nine and a half, nine billion for this project as kind of configured now?
Right now, the project is being estimated at six billion.
Six billion, okay.
At today's-
You know what, three percent of six billion is a bunch.
Well, we're only responsible for the acre and a quarter of the line going through our town.
Correct, it's three percent of the percentage of line that we have.
Whatever we have, and ours is an acre, I mean an acre, a mile and a quarter.
Right.
Our mile and a quarter would be subjected to three percent.
You won't get to a billion, but you'll be a zero off.
But, but, you're talking, we could get to two or three million real easy.
That's right.
That's right.
Yes.
Just for general speaking purposes.
I wasn't going to say that, but I was going to throw out the two million dollar number.
But I'm just doing basic thoughts.
Yeah.
So, and we can skate on that if we get the right negotiation here.
Cool. I mean, that's just the, you know, it is one potential reuse of the site, it's not the only potential reuse, and if Metro takes a pass on us, we'll come up with another plan on another date, but right now-
We're under the impression this is one of the more desirable locations.
One of the more desirable, more lucrative uses, because this is an employment-creating job, and as Mr. Garza indicated, MTA seems to be receptive to a Bellflower first hiring policies for new employees coming in there.
When we said we would ask that, we set a point apart, one point five acres, and they would develop that, it's not just allowing us to keep one point five acres, they would actually do the construction and the whole, it's a turnkey park?
We want, we want, our plan on this is, we, and we would press harder the negotiations, we want a usable turnkey park of at least an acre and a half.
Okay.
Soccer field.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's what you do.
I use an acre and a half, I use an acre and a half just so I can say a full-size soccer field with the right amenities, that's where, yeah.
Plus parking.
Plus parking, right. Well, an acre and a half, plus parking? Now we're up to two acres.
No, that'd be enough, that'd be enough, right, whether you could develop a soccer field with stack yard and parking for that, yeah.
I think they spent three million dollars on that soccer field at Bellflower High, didn't they?
Well, I don't know how they do that.
Juan, you said you wanted to do a motion?
If there's no more questions or comments, Mr. Mayor?
No, I think we're just chatting. We're just goofing off now.
No, no, we're discussing.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number one-eight dash six-seven, a resolution repealing City Bellflower Resolution number seventeen dash thirty-three, which was adopted on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, and restating the city's position to support with conditions the potential use of a twenty-three acre parcel at Lakewood and Somerset Site located east of Lakewood Boulevard and south of Somerset Boulevard as a potentially appropriate location for the placement of a Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority Light Rail Maintenance Facility.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Garza, and a second by Mayor Protem Santenaz. Call roll please.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
All right, consent counter, anybody have any recusals?
Mr. Mayor, before we start, I'd like to pull item fourteen I tonight.
Pull it for discussion, or pull it, pull it?
Just pull it, pull it, we'll bring it back a later day.
That's fourteen I?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from item fourteen J due to an employer conflict.
Let's see. That's it, and I want to recuse myself from fourteen D and fourteen E due to those locations[1787.23] That's it, and I want to recuse myself from fourteen D and fourteen E due to those locations are within five hundred feet of property I own.
Somebody would like to pull item fourteen, uh, G for a separate discussion?
Fourteen G for Sunny to discuss. Okay, uh, let's go for the discussion on fourteen G.
Yes, okay.
What you need, Sunny?
Mr. Huckman? Uh, my question here is on the, I just want to point clarification on the definition of a parking block. And I just got concerned with the, um, the last sentence of the definition, where it reads, if a parking block exceeds seven hundred fifty feet, but using the boundaries identified in this definition, then a parking block will not be longer than seven hundred fifty feet. So, my concern is, in my, the way I understood the definition is, let's say we have a stretch of, uh, street, let's say from, um, on Woodrow, from Alondra to Somerset, let's say it's more than, let's say it's about a thousand feet, for example. And, um, by this definition, seven hundred fifty feet will be the maximum, um, uh, distance to define a parking block. So, let's say there's fifteen homes that is covered by seven hundred fifty feet. Now, there's the sixteenth home that wants to be part of that block. So, my question is, because of this definition that the parking block will not be longer than seven hundred fifty feet, do we exclude that sixteenth house on this, on that stretch of Woodrow?
Correct, the intention of the ordinance wording was to indicate that a, on a very long street, a minimum lot size or block size would be seven hundred fifty feet, and it could be longer than that. Uh, section two, item B says the specified area must consist of at least one block. However, if there is can, um, a different interpretation of the wording, uh, based on having heard your concern earlier, we spoke to Carl, he's got a different, uh, turn of a phrase that will clarify, I think the intention of the ordinance and should be able to fix it to everyone's satisfaction.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did speak to the council member during the break. I think I, if, if I may, I'll read out some language that I think addresses the question. So, this would replace the last sentence of that definition, it would read as follows. In the absence of an intersecting street or highway, the city council can determine the length of a parking blo, block which cannot be less than seven hundred and fifty feet. So, that would, using your hypothetical, include the additional ten feet for the sixteenth house.
Okay, I think that will.
Sure.
That will address, I think that will address the issue, because when we talked about this, the other way is to create a separate block after seven hundred, well, that may be onerous on the sixteenth house.
Not the intention.
So, that was the intention, okay, all right. So, I'm good, so if we can adopt that change, I think I'll be okay with it.
And if you would like to, if the council would like to make that change tonight, we would, as I indicated, take or replace the last sentence with that definition, and you would need to reintroduce the ordinance tonight, and we would simply have it on for second reading for the next meeting.
Because it was introduced at the last meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry?
This made, this ordinance was introduced at the last meeting?
It was introduced at the last meeting, that's correct.
I guess we'll send it back.
There, there is one other clerical error, which would be in, on page two at the top. Right now, there's a new subsection B that's proposed, which currently reads as follows, a specified area must consist of at least parking one block. It should read one parking block.
Okay, so, we have consensus on the coun, council that we're going to pull, uh, fourteen G to get the.
Right language.
Right language, and bring it back?
And reintroduce the ordinance.
You can reintroduce it tonight as amended, if you wish, and then we.
Oh, we can reintroduce it tonight as amended, okay, we don't have to pull it back.
As part of the consider, of consent.
You want to reintroduce this, you want to follow vote, to reintroduce as amended?
Correct.
Oh, we just reintroduce, okay.
And then so.
Do you want a formal vote for that?
Yes, please.
Pull it, or do that separately, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, I can just, let's just do that right now while it's fresh. Okay, we're going to pull fourteen G for, to reintroduce for a language adjustment.
Second.
And, I guess I'll go ahead and make that motion to reintroduce it since I did. And I got a second by Coops. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinez.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
Thank you, y'all.
Okay, now it's reintroduced, it's not going to be on the consent calendar tonight, we're going to.
No.
Or.
No, excuse me.
Now it's off the calendar, or consent calendar, that's what I mean. So, now we started the clock for the cycle.
Okay.
All right, any other, okay, we're going to, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, less the recusals, and with item fourteen I and fourteen J pulled from it till a further date.
Second.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Through that there. All right. Council agents, the reports, Mr. Garza, you have anything tonight?
Yes, sir, I do. I just wanted to say, first of all, just, it's really exciting times in our city right now, um, talking about the hotels tonight, our maintenance facility potentially here in our city, the, the E and A that we just approved tonight, um, for the Greek Market site, and then fixing the sound, the first step in fixing the sound at the main. Right, it's all exciting, so, a lot of things going on in our city, which is.
Best part of the consent calendar, the main.
Right, absolutely.
You see that, Anita?
So, um, but what that, I, um, I attended the mayor's prayer breakfast, um, on Tuesday, October ninth, I just wanted to commend our mayor and the BMA and, and Kingdom Causes for all the work they did with that, with that event. Um, the Joint Service Club luncheon was, was great, I had to leave a little early, um, but I hear that the speaker was very well-received, and it was, uh, really popular, so I wanted to commend all clubs for going, um, not because I'm a Kewanian, but especially Kewanas Club for hosting the, the, um, the event, it was a nice job. Um, I had a meeting with, uh, State Senator Portantino, um, who's a friend to cities, on behalf of Legal Cities on the fifteenth of October. Really good, uh, meeting, um, and he committed to continue helping cities out when the new legislative session starts in December. And finally, um, briefly, but I attended the Bellflower Serpentimus, uh, breakfast that happened at Applebee's this past Saturday with my family. So, I just wanted to thank the Serpentimus for the invitation to that, and that completes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Councilmember Coops?
Yes, um, it's, when you watch this, it'll be either tomorrow night, which is Tuesday, it'll be Saturday, but you will have an opportunity to go down Bellflower Boulevard, and you should see the ten containers that have been worked on behind the old J.C. Penney Building, and they'll be, that is the basis for our Steel Craft, uh, project. So, uh, after tomorrow, go down Bellflower Boulevard, and you'll see the framework for, of the containers that are going to be there. And of course, there'll be all kinds of things going on in those containers to make them appropriate for the kind of use they'll be using. But, uh, take and check out Bellflower Boulevard, that's really going to make a difference on our main boulevard as to, uh, the activity that goes on there. And tomorrow is going to be a game-changing day for our city, having, uh, something really special that not, many cities would envy to have the chance to be a participant in. And, uh, I guess it's appropriate, at some point in time, we need to get together and discuss, as our survey has indicated, a plan of action to deal with the homeless situation, and I would like to think if, at some point, we develop an agenda or a special meeting, or something.
Working on that as we speak, I've been talking to Captain Harp at, at, uh, Lakewood Station, I always want to call Temple Station, because it's the first station I worked with, Lakewood Station. And Jeff Diedrich is lieutenant with the Homeless Task Force, the only sheriff's department, is a pretty knowledgeable guy, and a real infectious guy, really, you know, understands his mission and is very well at. So, we want to work in tandem with Mr. Diedrich and some other folks on this, and I want to plan a meeting, and then trying to schedule Diedrich and Harp together is a little bit of a pain, but we're looking to try to do it in January, if I can get it done in December, I will, but I'm not going to promise. But I think by January, we can get a meeting date scheduled to set up a workshop for that, so.
Well, I think you understand how the council is really concerned as to how that's developing.
Oh.
And I think we'll meet anytime, anyplace, anywhere to try to get something going.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh.
And I'm just speaking on behalf of everyone here, uh, it's, it's a concern.
You're preaching to the choir.
But I thought I should, uh, put it out there that, uh, we need to get a new, uh, focus.
Well, I'll see what I can do, in fact, what I'll do is, I'll reach out to Diedrich myself, I mean, he's a pretty good guy, he's been in here a couple of times, and, uh, I'll see if I can get him to commit to a date, because Harp will follow, but he's going on vacation for three weeks, starting next week.
No, and I get it. And, uh, you know, this report reflects that the, the citizens of this town.
Yeah.
Are very concerned, and we need to.
Well, here's what I do know, there's a multifaceted approach in play here, I, I know that, that part I get, I just don't know what it is. And, but I also believe the Sheriff's Department is going to be a critical piece of that multifaceted approach, so that's what we're going to talk about.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem Sunny Santinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, tonight, I mean, we, we quietly approve a, an item in the consent calendar that I think it's some, it's worth noting, because to me, it's a, it's a big deal. Um, that's, I'm talking about the Greek Market as, um, Councilmember Garza mentioned. One of the key things that, that, that is, will potentially come to the city of Bellflower is a, as in the staff report, is a, um, a movie art, art theater, it's, uh, called Lamently, and it's a well-known brand, and, um, so, we're very excited for them to come to the city of Bellflower, and we're keeping our fingers crossed that, uh, this will happen. So, um, let's, um, let's pray that, um, the, the negotiation go well, and, um, uh, this one will come into fruition. And, and second, I'd like to, um, uh, request that this council meeting tonight be, uh, be closed in honor of, in memory, in honor of Alice Eileen Brindell. Alice was born on March twentieth, nineteen twenty-five, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and passed away on October second, two thousand eighteen, at the age of ninety-three. Alice was the wife of dearly departed John Nelson Brindell. John and Alice enjoyed square dancing for many years, enjoyed watching the Steelers, and being with their family. Alice was a nurse for quite some time, and embraced her passion for music and singing. Alice was an avid singer and member of many chorus and show, uh, show organizations, including the Bellflower Civic Chorus, where she served as president for many years. And I remember that I met Alice for the first time many years ago as president of this organization, and I just, I'm ma, I'm just amazed with the, um, the number of people that, that received the joy out of the, of the performance of the Bellflower Civic Chorus. Alice survived her children, son Nelson and his wife Jean, daughter Judy Banalis and her husband Eric, daughter Susan Carrion and her husband Tom, and son Richard and his wife Mary. Alice is survived by seven grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. Services were held on October sixteen, two thousand eighteen, at Saint Dominic Xavier Parish, and, uh, I attended this memorial service, and it was well, well-attended, and thank you to the residents of the city of Bellflower. Um, I, uh, Alice used to, to live on the Bellflower High School track, and she is well-known at the Saint Dominic Xavier Parish. She was a member of the choir, and she was very passionate about, um, being, uh, with that parish. And Alice was laid to rest on October nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, at Forest Lawn Cy, in Cypress. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Brindell family. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, there, Mayor Protem Sunny Santinez. Okay, I have one thing, um, the state of the city, uh, two thousand eighteen video has been edited and now posted on the YouTube channel. I mentioned this earlier before the meeting, I just want to get people at the end. Uh, the video will be broadcasting on channel thirty-six, um, on our cable system, uh, one hour prior to council meetings. And that, uh, the days and times are Wednesday at six P.M., and then on Thursdays and Saturdays, ten A.M. That is one hour before the council meetings, everybody wish to see it. A lot of neat things in that, uh, video, or you can go to our, uh, website and get on YouTube and look at our YouTube channel. And with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of, uh, Alice Brindell to the next regular, uh, meeting here at the Bellflower City Council at five-thirty P.M. on Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. And that is a Tuesday due to the fact that Monday is Veterans Day. We're adjourned.